For our study session today, Mr. Howard Roberts, Mr. Trevor Carlson, and Mr. McNeil, are you participating in this as well?
Yes.
Perfect. And Jim McNeil are here to talk about bond, the bond process, and what we do going forward as far as finances go. So, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I'll just start out real briefly for an introduction. As you all know, in November, we had the election, and the voters did authorize the district to issue 99 and a half million dollars' worth of bonds. Now, we need to go ahead and sell those. And the rough parameter there is Mr. Marsh needs to start spending significant amount of money in April. So, we need to go ahead and go through the bond issuance process. And there are steps that we go through to have that happen. And the two folks we have here, first Trevor Carlson, the Managing Director from Piper Jaffray, he's primarily the underwriter or the selling of the bonds. That's his part, making us look good to the investors as well. Jim McNeil, our Bond Counsel, you've already seen him here. He's very involved in the election part of the bond piece. And now, he's here, a lot to do with IRS compliance. When you sell tax-exempt bonds, there's a lot of things that need to happen. And Jim's our legal expert in that area. Just by, I'll just say in advance, what we really need today, if we can get from you, is some guidance on, there'll be a recommendation on when and how much to sell the bonds. And we need to get a head nod from you on that. And Trevor will talk about that. He's going to go through the whole presentation on bond issue planning, and that'll be just one piece for that. And then after that, Mr. McNeil will talk about, you received, in addition to Trevor's presentation, a preliminary copy of what's called a bond delegation resolution. And Trevor will, or excuse me, Jim will kind of go through that a little bit briefly, and then entertain any questions you have on that. And we won't act on that resolution until the next board meeting. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over. Trevor, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Howard. I appreciate it. I believe you might have a hard copy, if not electronic copy, so you can follow along. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. And number two, congratulations. First time I've seen you since the successful passage in November. So, again, congratulations. What I want to touch on tonight are really talking about the bond sale process, some of the inputs that go into the planning, and ultimately, the execution of the bond sale. Look at a couple different ways to structure the bonds, and ultimately, look at the schedule that we have put in place that keeps us marching along the path towards completing financing. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. McNeil if you have any questions on the legal front, or if you have any questions regarding that draft delegation resolution that Howard alluded to. And please, obviously, stop me if you have questions. I want to make sure we are all on the same page. Speaking of pages, let's go to page one. A whole host of things that we think about throughout this process. Maximize funds available for construction. We want to put ultimately 99.5 million dollars into your capital projects fund. Maximize those funds, along with maximization of your state matching monies, to go forth and build the projects that were approved by the voters. And what we're doing is reutilizing your anticipated construction cash flow to back into our recommendation for the amount of bonds from that authorization that we believe you should sell at this point. And kind of jump forward to the crux of that is, we're going to make a recommendation to sell all of the authorization in one bond sale. The original plan had three bond sales embedded. We'll still be able to hit the tax rates and other things associated with the bond sale. Take a lot of interest rate risk off the table, right? You don't lock in that mortgage, that bond rate, until you sell the bonds. Plus, as I mentioned, Mr. McNeil can chat about too, is the IRS requirements surrounding tax-exempt bonds. And your construction cash flow is fairly rapid. We anticipate, based on an overarching IRS test, that says if you spend 85% of your bond proceeds within three years, that's a test, we think you'll be at a 24-month time period. So, a very accelerated cash flow spend. Securing low interest rates, obviously, very important. We'll talk a little bit about bond rating. Right now, you have a AA3 with Moody's, a very strong investment-grade credit rating. I don't anticipate that that will change. Credit enhancement, we'll utilize the school bond guarantee program. That language was embedded in your election resolution back in November, and that allows us to use the state, if you will, as a cosigner, which drives down your borrowing cost. Obviously, we're looking to structure the bonds accordance with investor demand, so we're keeping our finger on the pulse of the marketplace as we move forward through time, and making any adjustments on the fringes to the structure based upon investor demand. Mentioned earlier, minimizing interest rate risk, selling all the bonds in one sale locks in that entire authorization of 99 and a half million, hopefully, in March. Optional redemption features. The Tax Cut Act of 2017 made some tweaks to how tax-exempt bonds for governmental entities will process or move forward in time. So, we'll look at optional redemption features associated with the bonds, giving yourself the ability to possibly refinance those bonds in the future is kind of the bullet point there. Maintain tax rate stability. We'll talk about the tax rate goals and look at a couple different scenarios associated with that. Part of, I think, the discussion tonight might be around the second-to-last bullet point, provide capacity for future projects. We'll look at what was embedded in the plan prior to November, and then some of the opportunities that are in front of us now. And obviously, make sure that we're hitting the goals embedded in the resolution as far as the maximum amortization term. We've seen interest rates increase rather dramatically in a fairly short amount of time. We've probably all seen the financial press with the stock market and the volatility. A lot of that has been predicated on interest rates increasing, as some investors think that the possibility of inflation is going to increase at a more rapid pace than it has in the past. We're still in a very low-interest-rate period, so I think locking in the entire balance from the authorization is a prudent move at this point in time, especially in light of the Fed is anticipated to increase the short end of the yield curve, the overnight rate between, the lending rate between banks, three to possibly four times this calendar year, which shows up in this chart here. So, let's just focus on one data point here. So, these are the interest rates for a one-year loan, a one-year bond. Those rates have, sorry, I'm kind of looking at this sideways, range from, let's say, 8% to close to zero. Right now, the yield curve, the term structure of interest rates, is this black line here. Interest rates in the short end have increased. That yield curve has become a little bit more flat, as the Fed has increased rates. But to put things into perspective, on average, during that time period going back to 1991, interest rates, on average, were at that blue line. So, we're hugging the bottom end of those ranges. So, I think that's another important reason to consider authorizing, or excuse me, issuing the entire authorization in one sale. Any questions thus far? Okay. Page four, I don't want to spend too much time on bond rating, but we'll go through a process of having a conversation with Moody's Investor Service in the next couple of weeks to describe a whole host of factors about what's happening within the Pasco School District, enrollment, general fund balance, size, diversity of the economy, things of that nature, right? Your assessed value is growing. Hit on those highlights there. And I assume that we will maintain our strong credit rating of AA3. Just to put that into perspective, this column here on the right, AA3 is here. We'll utilize that school bond guarantee program, which is AA1. Highest rating is AAA. For your reference, I'll skip page six, but some of the bullet points that Moody's mentioned in the last report during the refinancing in 2015. The important component going into our bond planning and our management of tax rates is assessed value. As you possibly are aware, the final assessed value for 2018 increased 12% year-over-year for a total of almost $6.3 billion. That's the addition of all of the real and personal property within the school district's boundaries. So, that graph shows that upward tick. We're utilizing, I think, a conservative estimate going forward, 2019 and '20, we're anticipating a 6% growth rate, and then, in the model, putting in 3% thereafter. Put that in perspective, put some compound annual growth rates kind of right in the middle of the slide here. Looking back to 1998 through 2018, on average, year-over-year, 7.92% in high sixes, depending on how you slice and dice the data. So, I think we have a nice, reasonable assumption rate going forward for assessed value. The raw detail, for your reference, on page eight of the assessed value, historical tax rates. One thing to note, the tax rate for bonds was at 2.25 in 2017. That was obviously during the time of all of the planning for the November bond election. And then, the assessed value increased at that rapid clip of 12%, driving that tax rate down to $2 even. Okay? That's important because, I don't know if you remember this little graphic in the upper right-hand side of page 10, I pulled that from your website, talking about the cost of the new bond, the proposed estimated cost of 59 cents. And if you possibly recall, this model here and the output from that led us to really this pre-election number, right? We needed a number, an estimated cost, to go out and discuss with the taxpayers and the voters. So, as I mentioned earlier, right in the middle of this sheet, we anticipated three bond sales, right? We did not have a robust construction cash flow at that time. We've refined that dramatically with the help of Randy and Kim over the last couple of weeks. And so, this was a pretty conservative assumption, so that that delta of 59 cents, 2.25, remember, that was 2000, that was the real number that we had at the time, we anticipated $2.84 flat, level tax rate, which is that delta, that differential of 59 cents. Okay? Historical perspective, that's where we were pre-election. Where I think we could be, remember 2.25, let's look at this far-right-hand column, 2.25 in 2017, remember, it drops to 2. If we keep the rate as low as possible and level, we could be at $2.51. So, the question comes, what do you measure that 59-cent differential to, 2017 or 2018? Does that make sense, right? That differential of 2.51 versus 2.25, that's a 26-cent increase in tax rate, or it's a 51-cent increase in tax rate if we compare it to 2000. I think an important thing to consider, to take note, is right in the middle of this sheet, there's a column called Debt Service. This is 2018. This is for a single sale of bonds for all 99 and a half million dollars. The first payments will be in calendar year 2019. Why is that important? Because your EPNO levy decreases dramatically from calendar 19, excuse me, 2018 to 2019. So, that gives us some room, if you will, and some taxpayer relief on that front, whether right or wrong. We don't want to get into a pros and cons of 2242, but I think that is an important piece from a timing perspective. Dovetails nicely into reality. Questions, comments on that model? Another way to check this out is to look at it from a graphical perspective. The blue is your existing debt. I went back to 2007. You know, you're hovering around $3. Today, we're at 2 even. The I-chart on the previous page, that model produces a pattern in the orange of minimal principal and interest payments in the near term. Well, those bars are larger in orange, it's the associated larger principal payments that hit, to make sure that that tax rate is level over time and as low as possible.
And this is based on the projected 3% growth, 6% next two years, and then 3%
Yes.
For the following?
Yes. And my hope is that we have a downward sloping pattern. Promises made, promises kept, you know, we thought the tax rate was here, taxpayers, it's down here. Trying to be conservative.
I think that's a great point, and something that I hope we can highlight somehow, that, you know, we put out this bond proposal, it says 59 cents, and if we're less than that, that is something to celebrate, right? That people should know and be aware of. And I don't know all the legality of how we share that, if it's okay. But, you know, I mean, people should understand that, that we did this, and we threw, we tried to maximize it, and it's actually going to be less than that.
Yeah.
And we're in good position.
Yes. Capitalization on that, I think, is very important.
And just looking at this, so this pays off in, is it 14 years?
Yes. Yeah, these are
Versus 20.
These are relatively short transactions, as far as the amortization schedule, because we have such a large drop-off in the existing debt in 2028, '29.
Right.
We're able to kind of backfill and put those larger principal payments at that point, to try and keep that tax rate low and level.
And if we pass a bond, then it'll just, another bond, it will just stack on top of that one? Is that correct?
Everything being constant, the model's 100% correct, right? Our assumptions are dead-on for assessed value. Yes. Exactly.
But if we have greater assessed value growth than what we're projecting, then we would be able to do something similar and actually pass another bond, say, whenever, five years, 10 years, and be able to, if our assessed value continues, we could actually not have too much of a bump.
Too much of a bump, but we are, we have a bump now, and that same type of scenario would happen in the future, right? We have a step down in the tax rate, a dramatic one, in 2033. We do not have one to, let's say, accommodate a bond issue in three, six years, whatever the next timeline is, you know, time period where you think you would need to come back to tackle X, Y, and Z project.
Okay, this might be a little off the subject, but is our, is our, do our community builders have access to this information already? That group? Okay. I think, I don't know. I would love to see them have this information, especially as they're determining a future plan. To me, it just seems like we have room for a little bit more of a bond and more schools like we need.
Michelle, it looks like you want to jump in.
So, yes, they will get financial considerations. Trevor and I actually had a great conversation this afternoon about how he can help us moving forward with that process.
Great. Thank you.
So, this type of model is traditionally what the Pasco School District has entertained and actually executed upon, basically trying to keep that tax rate as low as possible. Because of some of the struggles that have surrounded the passage in achieving 60% yes on bonds, that's been the standard MO. And this reflects the intent, if you will, of the pre-election planning. Highlights of the schedule, actually not the highlights, this is some detail that keeps Jim and I and the team on track. We're here tonight to brief you at the study session. As Howard mentioned, on the 27th, we will be back for your consideration of the delegation resolution, that you have the draft in your packets. Earlier that day, Michelle, Howard, Jody, myself will be on a teleconference with Moody's Investor Service, presenting the credit quality and worthiness of the school district to the rating agencies. So, we'll do that in the afternoon, early afternoon on the 27th. And next page, we anticipate being in the market on March 14th, locking in your borrowing cost at that point in time. And I think Howard brought this up earlier. Kim wants to have some dollars in the capital projects fund to move forward, so we kind of backed into the schedule, making sure that early April was the closing date, actually, when the funds would be deposited into the account to move forward and plan and build. Questions, comments?
Is there any concern with the state's matching funds? You know, the last one to two years, and a tremendous amount of passage of, and maybe Mr. McNeil can comment on this, this tremendous amount of passage of school bonds across our state, and that's been a concern in the past, and the state's ability to appropriately fund those matching dollars that they're supposed to?
Yes, I have not heard, we're a financial advisor for the state of Washington, for example, so we're, you know, neck-deep in the planning for their bond issues to keep the system up and running, and so is Jim and his team. I have not heard any rumblings that the size of the ask from that program, the size of the ask exceeds the ability to fund. I think the big benefit, obviously, was the hurdle was cleared to approve that capital budget, so those funds are available for you to utilize. We had a plan, I was here a couple weeks ago, and chatted a lot with staff about what was our idea for the recommendation for tonight. And a couple weeks ago, it was dramatically different, based upon the state matching program being closed. Since that's opened, it's allowed us to really kind of open up the financing to, I think, something that's more optimized for the taxpayers. Great question. Anything else before we turn it over to Mr. McNeil to give you a brief primer, emphasize that, on the resolution? But seriously, to answer questions on that, and I'll be here if you think of something.
So, we are going, I guess I might be getting ahead of myself, we are going to be locking in on an interest rate between March 14th and April 3rd, is that correct?
No. Early morning on March 14th, we will market the bonds, lock in interest rates. Michelle will sign a bond purchase agreement later that afternoon. So, think of it like your mortgage, you lock, then you close, same sort of general idea.
Just with the way things are going with interest rates, is there a possibility of locking earlier? It just looks like there's a good possibility of them going up.
That's a great question. Based upon board meeting schedules, some of the process and procedure that's involved in putting together the bond offering document, we've circulated the first draft of that. It's, I don't know, 70 pages worth of legalese. There are certain hurdles that have to be overcome before we can enter the marketplace. If you notice, I have mailed the POS, the offering document, excuse me, offering document to investors on the 7th, that gives us about a week to talk to investors, gauge their interest, and then allow us that opportunity, a week later, to actually lock in investors and lock in borrowing costs. So, there's just some things that need to happen, and I think we're on an aggressive timeline that's been laid out here in the last couple pages. But duly noted, we're moving forward. Mr. McNeil?
Could you discuss the bond market versus the stock market? Because sometimes there's
Sure.
There's not necessarily a direct correlation, right? It's inverse to
Correct. Mr. McNeil suggested that I speak about the difference between the stock market, the bond market. The fixed income market, the bond market, is driven by United States government debt, Treasury securities. And the geopolitics around that drives other smaller markets, even though the tax-exempt municipal bond market is very, very large, it dwarfs in comparison to the Treasury market. So, as the Federal Reserve has its finger on the pulse of short-term interest rates and moves those, that will have an impact on your borrowing cost. China is the largest holder of United States government Treasury securities. If they don't come to the next auction and want to buy securities, right, there's not a lot of demand there, interest rates will increase. So, all of those different dynamics go into play, along with the stock market, are earnings doing well, and things of that nature. So, bad news is good news for the bond market. It's a little perverse that way, because there's a flight to safety, right? United States government Treasury securities will be paid, because the government can print money to pay that debt in the short run, without any too much of a hiccup. So, those differences and those macro ideas and realizations drive where interest rates will be as we move forward.
Let's see, I think you have the, I don't know whether to switch to the resolution on here, Howard?
Yeah. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here once again, the board. Congratulations, great. It was close, but we've certainly looked at all the information that came from the auditor, all the notices, and we're satisfied that there are no issues related to the election resolution, which is good news. Doesn't always happen that way, as you would think. But, no, we're thrilled about this for the district and for the taxpayers and the community. It's wonderful news. I don't necessarily need it up there.
Yeah.
But maybe just the cover page.
I'm not sure where it went, honestly. Unless it's this one. There we go.
Okay. We'll just leave it at that, at that point. So, it's a pleasure to be here again, and I just would also want to thank Michelle and Howard, Sarah, Jody, Kim and Randy. We put a lot of pressure on them to gather us information, so we can put these documents together. You can see they're fairly detailed, just like the bond election resolution was, and we rely upon them extensively to help us gather sufficient information to prepare the resolution, and all the other closing documents as well. I also thank Trevor. We spent a lot of time looking through documents and reviewing the cash flow. Trevor did mention the 85% threshold test. It's a reasonable expectation test that the district must accomplish, and so we rely upon Randy and Kim to provide us the construction cash flow, so we can actually verify that, yes, you're going to spend 85% of your bond proceeds within three years. So, that's how that tax issue kind of interplays with delegation resolution. You might remember, when we were talking about the bond election resolution, that we identified three steps in this process. The first step was the board adopts the bond election resolution. Second step was the voters approve it. And the third step, we come back with you for a delegation resolution, authorizing the issuance of the bonds. And that's where we are tonight. I wanted to make sure that we at least gave you a chance to look at the resolution, to think about it, prior to the board adopting the resolution. And certainly, Michelle and Howard were very encouraged to set up that schedule, so we could get everyone's chance to look at the resolution. And it does, it helps our job so much easier, when everyone has a chance to look at the documents, to raise questions, and to consider the issues. It's a large bond issue, and there's a lot of moving parts. The bond delegation resolution, as the third step in the process, and I'm just going to really summarize what, by adopting this resolution, what you're doing. You are authorizing the issuance of the bonds. You're establishing a contract between the district and the district's bond owners. Trevor and Piper Jaffray are the initial purchasers of the bonds. They will then turn around and sell those bonds to investors who have placed orders with them. And it's quite a fascinating process on the day of pricing. They'll sell $100 million over the phone. You know, we're all about getting specific details and contracts, and they sell $100 million over the phone. It's quite something. The other thing you're going to be doing by authorizing this resolution is you're authorizing the use of the bond proceeds to make the capital improvements that the voters authorized. You're also delegating authority to Michelle, to the Secretary, to You're also delegating authority to Michelle, to the secretary, to the board, and in her absence, and I've listed the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, but I think in conversations with Michelle and Sarah, I think we'll change that alternate, in case Sarah's, or in case Michelle's not available, to Sarah's office for the alternate signing authority. What that means is, is that at the day of pricing, Trevor will go into the market, and they will price the bonds, and we will look at the parameters, and Exhibit A attached to the resolution identifies various parameters, interest rate, true interest cost, optional redemption, I mean, all sorts of parameters that we've established for the issuance of the bonds, to make sure that we're complying with state law. And what will happen is, we'll look at that to make sure that all those parameters have been satisfied on the day of pricing, because we're rendering an opinion that the bonds are valid. If for some reason, one of those parameters is not satisfied, then we're not going to be able to render our legal opinion regarding validity of the bonds. And so on that day of pricing, we will prepare a certificate for Michelle to sign that will tick off all the parameters. You've established these, you've gone through the whole list of items identified in Exhibit A, and Michelle will sign that certificate, and the last sentence is something that says, you know, I am, after reviewing this certificate, I am prepared to now execute the bond purchase agreement. So Trevor then will send us the bond purchase agreement, which is the offer that locks in those interest rates at that time, and then we go forward to closing. And just a little word on closing, so from March 14th to April 3rd, we gather all the necessary closing documents and have signatures, we sign, there's documents related to tax compliance and a variety of other documents that we'll prepare, just like you would in a closing of a real estate transaction. And then ultimately, we'll render our legal opinion, and that legal opinion then is used by Trevor's investors, and so that's kind of how this symbiotic relationship works in the market, as far as the bond lawyer and the underwriter. Additionally, by adopting this resolution, you're pledging your excess property taxes approved by the voters to repay the bonds, you're also agreeing to comply with all the federal tax laws related to the bonds, you're authorizing the final prospectus that Trevor mentioned, we call it the final OS, to be distributed to investors, and you're also agreeing to comply with various continuing disclosure requirements. Investors want to know how Pasco's doing, there's a national repository, you can go online, it's called EMA, it's the converse to Edgar in the private sector, and an investor can go on that website and see all your bonds over the years, and see how you're doing. Your financial statements will be there, et cetera, and so an investor can look at that document. While you're agreeing to comply with certain requirements to file on an annual basis with EMA, so that investors can stay abreast of what your, how the district is doing. Then finally, you're approving participation in the state guarantee program, Trevor identified that, and the nice bump it gives you from a credit rating. In fact, the district's already received the preliminary certificate for the bonds from the state of Washington, so we're in essence prepared to go into the market at any time, once we get the preliminary official statement drafted and finalized, so. Any questions? I know that's a lot, and...
On the interest rate, where it says that we won't sell for more than 5.5%,
Yes.
How do we come up with that number? Is that a set number that we're always putting in here, or, and do I understand, right, in the previous slide that Trevor showed us, it says today's interest rate, am I looking on page 11, is expected to be about 3.74%, 3.75%?
Correct. Right. We identify, in conjunction with Trevor's firm, kind of a maximum interest rate, and so although we hope it stays at that period, and I would assume that if, at the day of pricing, if everything goes haywire, and we're not at, we're substantially above what that looks like, that we'd have a conversation with you, because this resolution is good for, through 2019. So if, for whatever reason, the market goes south, you can pull the pricing and wait for interest rates to settle down, if that happens. But generally, you set a range of parameters for interest rate, for true interest cost as well, and so 5.5% has been pretty common, the tick, the true interest cost, has also been pretty common, around 5.5%. Some have gone up to 6% last fall, but generally, it's in that 5.5% range, and we rely upon Trevor's firm to tell us, okay, give us a range of what that looks like.
But is, so today, is it about 3.75%?
Correct.
So, and we're going to lock in a month from now?
Correct.
So we're giving you 1.75% buffer between now and then, and, okay. And that's a normal, that's not too big of a buffer, that if it went up that quickly, would a district want to possibly wait? Because that's a lot of volatility, and then it might come down, I mean, it might go up again, but do you want to wait? Is that a normal buffer there, 1.75%? It seems high, but I don't remember what we've done in the past.
If you, if you remember in our planning of pre-election, we would have a buffer of 1% in our models going forward for each of those future bond sales. So Scott, it's a little bit of art versus science, we want to give ourselves enough room to be able to execute without having to come back to the board on a daily, monthly basis to get the bonds marketed and ultimately closed.
Okay. It just, if it's a norm that you see 1.75, just thinking to your personal finances, most of us wouldn't today go into the bank and say, what's the interest rate? And they tell us 4%, whatever it is, to buy a house, and we'd say, okay, well, go ahead and lock us in up to, you know, 5.75, 1.75%, we might say a half a percent or a percent. And again, if this is a norm for a large school district, that's fine, just, it seems big, looking at it from the smaller lens of your own finances.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, attention to detail. As far as ultimately, the interest rates that you lock in on the day of sale are, they're market-driven rates, right? We have a distribution channel that's going to dig deep and find buyers under rocks and crevices across the nation, but ultimately, the market's the market, it's very efficient, it's a multi-trillion-dollar marketplace, right? These are big boy and girl investors that have their finger on the pulse of managing many millions of dollars, if not billions, so they're going to put their smarts to it, and we're going to find that market clearing price on the day of sale, right? There's going to be buyers, we have a product.
But with that kind of volatility, 1.75% change in a month, you wouldn't recommend that a district like ours waits for that same volatility to hit back down?
Probably not, we would have that conversation. If we got close to our upwards, upward bounds, we could have that conversation.
Well, and you do also have a pre-pricing call that you have before...
Yeah, yeah, so the, it's the day before the bond sale, we'll have a check-in call with district staff to alert them of the outcome from the pre-marketing that we've done the week prior, to get folks lined up to purchase the bonds, and then ultimately execute the next morning.
And one last question, if it did hit the upper end, 5.5, let's say, what would the total debt service be instead of 146 million? How much would it increase that?
I don't want to do that math on the fly, Scott. Based upon, right, this is not a level principal and interest mortgage, right, it's lumpy, based upon the existing debt structure that we're wrapping around, so I would have to get back to you. Just hopefully I understand.
So we're meeting the day before that to approve it anyway, aren't we not? Aren't we talking about the 14th is when we lock in?
Yes.
And we're meeting the 13th, isn't that when we approve it? Or are we approving it next week?
This resolution to basically give Michelle and Sarah the opportunity and the authority to move forward and lock in borrowing costs, do the paperwork to close, that's the 27th, that's in two weeks.
I'm confident, if it starts moving that much, we'll have a lot more conversations than just, what are we going to do with this bond?
Right, yes, good point, thank you.
I would be interested, though, if it's not, you could send it to us later, what the total debt service would be on the upper end, 5.5%?
Yeah.
And then what it'd do to the 2.51% rate, what it'd take that up to?
Yes, I can do that. Make a note and put it on my list.
I know, I think last time, we actually, as a board, narrowed that, that big percentage jump, because we didn't want to go there, and, I mean, I'm just looking at the numbers, it doesn't look like it's been 5.5% since, it's like, January of, I don't know, 2000, or, excuse me, not January, but sometime in 2014, 15, I don't know.
We, in, we can pick a number that satisfies you, we can pick a number, let's say, let's talk just throughout numbers, we can pick 4%. If interest rates exceed that, we'll be back in front of you to get authorization to either move forward at a higher borrowing cost, or put everything on hold.
I'm not suggesting that, I just...
No, I'm just showing the options, right, I mean, so...
So you still have the ability, we're giving you the power to go up to 5.7%.
Yes, ma'am.
Say things look like they're kind of volatile, and they make a spike up, even though we're well below the 5.75%, we are just giving the ability to make that, so our district officials, who was that, Sarah and Michelle, will be able to say, no, we're going to wait and see if that doesn't come down, or whatever. That will happen.
I think I understood that correctly, yes.
Okay.
I am confident you guys are working in our best interest, I don't think we've seen this volatility in, I don't know how long, so, and I'm confident if it, if it looks like it's going to move, you guys will advise us to do the right thing.
We will keep you apprised.
I am plenty comfortable leaving it right there and moving forward.
I would love to do it a little faster, because I just think these are going higher, but I know you are doing it as fast as you can.
I appreciate that.
Because I have followed some of the market, and every indicator says that interest rates are going to rise, so, anyway.
Well, we haven't seen, so, over the last, I mean, last year we did, I don't know how many, maybe close to a billion dollars' worth of school voter-approved bonds, and we were all around 6, 5.5% in that maximum parameter.
In the last year?
Yeah, just in the last year, and it's interesting...
The number embedded in the resolutions, not the actual borrowing.
Yes, not the actual borrowing cost, but the number embedded in the resolution, thank you.
Thank you.
And so it, so, we don't want to say never, because we've just seen the market go sideways, certainly, but this gives you the flexibility, and certainly, we'll have a long conversation on the day of, the pre-pricing call, because I think Trevor will have a good idea where that number looks, and if it's way high, then we'll certainly have to bring that back, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions at all? Great questions.
I, from what I remember, four years ago, our rating was at AAA, was it not? And now it's AA? It wasn't, it's always been AA?
It was, it was single A before, A1.
Oh, really?
A double 3 is the next, not the upper.
Okay, so it's gone up, not down, in the last four years?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Correct.
Great, all right, well, that's really good news. You should share that kind of news, that's important.
Well, and the likely opportunity to share that is right after pricing, you'll be able to send a press release saying, we just went into the market, we did X, Y, and Z, so that's...
Share it with the people who buy the bonds.
I know, I know. Sometimes I think it's good to share with the community.
Which reminds me, and Trevor, and I would say this, remember, you are not authorized as the board to actually buy the district's bonds, so just heads, I know it sounds like crazy, but it's, we just want to make sure that you're not in a position where you're making decisions that could impact your financial benefit, so, all right, thank you.
So just to close up this part, I think you heard the recommendation is to go ahead and sell 100%, to do what we can to lock it in. Do I have head nods, basically, that's, we're going to give Trevor instruction to, and Jim, to go ahead and do that, that would be very helpful, okay. And so next, you'll see the resolution coming back, and we'll move forward with this scenario as Trevor presented then.
So are we going to talk about different options for repayment, or is that...
We can, we can do that. Did you have...
So I think in this, I don't know if you're going to continue in your slide presentation, Trevor, but I think that there are other options in there, and I think, is the recommendation not to, okay, so maybe not in the one up there?
Oops.
You are the best, thank you for your help. Page 15, another scenario would be to, let's, let's talk high level.
The mic totally off base for not being on the microphone.
We need to be on the microphone, I think.
The color's here?
Yeah.
Your mind's eye, he raised it. Okay? The way we structure the orange provides capacity in calendar year 2024 to bring on additional debt. Maybe that's the right year, maybe it's the wrong year, but that's high level. So theoretically, a bond election in 2023, start filling in the holes, filling in those gaps in 2024 for a future authorization. Okay? What does that look like?
Is that a single, that's a single election, and it's cut into three, like we were talking about here?
Correct. So that looks like 2018, we sell all 99.5 million today, in 2023, we get this 84 million for Base 2, whatever you want to call it, Base 3. By, how do we do that? A tax rate of 284, not 2.51, 284.
How does it, how does it look if we were to pass that in 2023, leave it at 2.50 now between, or, you know, 2.51 equivalent between now and 2023, and then stack it?
We have Amy's step up.
Much above 284, a lot higher than 284 to sell an $84 million bond? Or is it, is it close to that, like 2.90?
It will be greater than 284.
So it's a step up now, or a step up later, but...
Right. And so that's where there's a little bit, just crystal clear on the messaging, right? It's 59 cents, 59 cents compared to what? 59 cents compared to 2.25, or today's reality of 2 bucks? If you think it's the reality of $2, then you're exceeding 59 cents.
You're the lawyers, what legally can we, because to me, it makes a lot of sense to do the 284, our voters passed it under the 2,000 whatever, not the current today, and then it will, you know, then the voters will either have a drop-off or pass another bond. To me, that just seems the best.
I hear your message, and it's 100% legal.
Okay, that's what I would like to do, but I don't know how the...
Yes, I just, I mean, the terms under state law, the terms and conditions for pricing and selling bonds are yours, in your discretion. You could have a bond that has one principal payment in 20 years, so you can structure it any way that you deem appropriate.
Even though we said 59, I think we...
Well, and that's, there's the legal authority, and then there's the transparency issue of credibility, frankly, this is not an easy answer, because what you're doing is you're, if you were telling the voters a certain rate, and now you're changing that kind of, not midstream, but all of a sudden now, you could get folks who say, hey, gee, we didn't hear that message before, it could, it could cause some credibility issues in the future. And I'm not saying it will, it's just, there's a risk politically that that could happen, so.
So I want to just take a minute here and talk about where we are. So when we look at, just talking about this rate, so when we think of a rate, we're not locking in a rate here, we advertised a rate, and that rate was 59 cents based on the 2017 assessed value.
Yes.
Now, when assessed value goes up, the rate is distributed across all the properties, so while the rate goes down, their payment is going to be the same.
No.
The payment...
Depending on new construction.
Depending on new construction, depending on how we forecast, how well we forecast our increase in assessed, our increase in assessed value.
Yes, is the pie the same, and there's redistribution with the pie, or is the pie expanding?
Well, the pie is expanding, but we've accounted for that with our 3% annual growth. Now, in the past, growth has increased faster than what we projected, consequently, our rate has gone down.
From the graph before, was it 3, and now it's 2?
Right.
So your portion went down as well?
So your portion went down as well?
Well, it depends, it depends on whether we, the portion has gone down because our, but our assessed value has gone up. Our rate has gone down, our assessed value has gone up. So here's where we have to be careful. We don't want to increase taxes on folks. So if we just go based on a rate and we say we want to lock in 59 cents, then even though they're assessed, if their sensor assessed value has gone up, if we say we're going to go for 59 cents based on the 2018 assessed value, now their taxes are going up. So here's where we have to be careful. And I don't want people's taxes to go up. I'd like to keep the amount everybody pays the same. Consequently, the rate is going to go down unless we're really good at projecting assessed value growth.
And I hope we're conservative on that.
I would expect we're conservative.
In the long run, and I think we are, right? You went through the great recession and did not see a decrease in your assessed value. That says something.
Yeah. I think the issue with that, the message of that is, your taxes are going, if we didn't pass this 100 million, passing a $100 million bond is raising taxes. There's no denying that. Now, we can change and all these projections, a lot of, there's a lot of question marks in there, but it's, to me, it's a misstatement to say your taxes are not going to go up because that's just not true completely. Because if we're going to pass a $100 million bond.
So let me rephrase that.
You just have to be careful with how we say that.
We approved, the voters approved the 59% or 59 cent increase on 2017's assessed value. So taxes will go up based on 2017 value. The thing that we have to be careful of is we, if, is we say, well, now it's 2018, assessed value's gone up, we're going to still target that 59 cents. That's disingenuous. So what we have to do is say, okay, it went up this much, account for the increase in assessed value, and I think this is what Mr. Carlson is getting at, is we've, it's now 51 cents rather than 59, is it, or whatever the new number is.
And that's the thing, but that's, that's another, what's confusing. They didn't approve a rate. We approved a 99.5 million bond. We approved an amount that we will collect and the rate is not set. That will change and it depends on how we format the repayment, it depends on our assessed value, so no one approved a 59 cent rate. That's just provided as informational that based on current numbers, we, our best guess is it's going to be about this much. But the voters are not approving a rate, they are approving this dollar amount.
So when we go to set the repayment schedule, we are basing it on that rate. So they approved $99 million. We have the liberty certainly to, I would expect, that we can make it whatever we want. But there's where I think we have to be careful, is they approved at that, they approved that bond based on a 59 cent per thousand increase based on the 2017 assessed value.
So Steve, though, as a voter, I approved a $99 million bond, I'm expecting a 59 cent increase. If my taxes increase 59 cents this year, I will have completely understood that I will not go back and say, wait a minute, assessed values went up, this went up, we should be paying less. And I think that we were very honest with the public in that. And I think having that lower tax rate later or be able to build a bond, have a bond to fill that in is great. So it's almost, anyway, I don't have any problem with that and I feel like I'm a very genuine and honest person. So that might be a technicality there, but we approved a $99 billion bond and that's what the voters approved. And we are staying within that and we are not going to tax them more than 59 cents per. But what's funny is if something happens and the assessments go down, that, it will go up, the 59 cents will actually go up. So even though we said 59 cents, it could be more because what they approved was a $99 million bond.
And actually, they approved you to repay those bonds unlimited as to rate or amount. So, I mean, yes, and that's where I was getting at as far as the credibility issue. The dilemma that districts can get into is promising a certain rate and then deviating from it. Can you do that? Certainly, you can, as I said, you can do whatever you want.
We could pay it all back next year.
You could.
In one huge tax.
But again, it's more of a practical political concern than it is a legal issue for you to consider, so.
Yeah, I think this really highlights the messaging, you know, because we need to get away, we just need to focus on, we should never say your taxes are not going to go up because that's just really fundamentally not true, even if the rate, and we should never say that you're approving this rate. And I think that's clear on the messaging that says this is an assessment or whatever. And so we need to be really careful. And everyone that talks about this needs to be really careful in how we say things, you know, because your taxes aren't going to, that's not true. Because if this didn't pass, your taxes would go down even more. Now, our taxes are going to go down because the state has changed the model, our levy's going to go way down. And 99% of people in our community do not know all those details. And so I just think it's super important, the messaging and what we say, and we should never say that you're approved this rate because that's not true. We should never say your taxes won't go up, that's not true. We should just, we should be clear with the message. We're approving this amount of money because we need schools. And those other things change regularly. And so we don't want to stick to those types of messages because they're not genuine. Or, I mean, we could have good intentions, but it may backfire.
So all these projections are based on a rate. That's my point. I'm not saying that we approved a rate, but they are all based on a rate. And here's where we have to be careful, is we do have the liberty to set our repayment schedule. And we want to set our repayment schedule based on what we advertised, that it would cost people. Now, you can call that a rate, you can call that a tax, you can call it whatever you want, but we have to, I believe it is our responsibility to match that as closely as we can. The thing that I don't see here that I would, that I would like to take into, well, there's two things. So our levy rate is going down and it's going down significantly. And that wasn't necessarily voter-approved, that was the legislature. And I would like to take some of that decrease in what we're going to see on the levy side and transfer it into a bond, into this bond repayment. Rather than see such a huge tax drop, I think all of our citizens know that we have a need for buildings. And I don't think, I'm just, I don't think that they would be too upset with us if we took some of that significant decrease and transferred it over into the repayment of this bond. Now, I know we have to be careful how we message that because it, we don't want to mix the two, but that tax decrease, we can take and shorten the term on this bond by moving some of that, what would have been levy money into the repayment of this bond. And I think that's worth looking at. And the other part of this is, we can set this payment schedule. We know that in the future, we're going to need more buildings and sooner rather than later. And I had asked Mr. Carlson to take a look at potentially building in a drop in the future so that when we go to build a new high school, which we need, that, which is going to be a significant lift, that we have some room built into our payment schedule to be able to add that at not such a significant lift later. Basically, what we would be doing is stretching out the term of this bond to give us more favorable borrowing ability or more payment ability later on. So I am in favor of looking at those things. If that's too much to ask and do at this point, then I'm, I guess we, I think we have to be informed as a board that, that four years or whenever we go to ask for money for a high school, that we're going to ask for a big amount and it's going to be a significant increase. Or we can do a little work now and lessen that pain when the time comes, or lessen that increase when the time comes.
Yeah, these are tough questions. Obviously, I mean, just for what most people understand, you look at a 15-year versus a 30-year mortgage for your house, right? A lot of people say a 30-year mortgage is a total nonsense. You should never buy a house for 30-year mortgage because the amount of interest you pay is ridiculous. So very soon after we buy, we changed to a 15-year because you just save so much money. So I'm all about, I absolutely think we need to be honest and genuine and without question, follow what we've said. And I also, along with that, want to emphasize that what we say is so important and how we say it. I want to save the taxpayers' money and kind of what we're getting at for, in a different, in just a simpler way is that, you know, do we want to, who's going to pay it, right? If we want to spread it out over 30 years, it's going to cost more interest and we're kind of passing that on, right? If you're, you know, if you're an older person and you're going to plan to move away, you're not going to pay as much, right? And so you get into all these little details and so we have to kind of find the balance there between, you know, what is going to maximize and cost us the least amount of interest and be the most practical. Everyone knows we are going to need another bond and it looks like you've already kind of, you know, you've figured that in. We know that we already need another high school, so that, there's no question, that's not a surprise to people. So I would trust that we're going to figure, and it looks like you've done that, figure that in in the next few years to how we could make that work. That's going to save us the most money, that be reasonable still and something that we can message appropriately. So I'm all for looking at different options, you know? And when you look at your house, you can look at your 15-year, 30-year and decide if that's really a wise decision or not.
When do we have to decide on the bond repayment schedule?
Before March 7th.
Okay. Which in board meeting calendars means February 27th. So I think the piece that, and I apologize, Mr. Christiansen, I wasn't asked for my perspective. The district staff, the initial model that Mr. Carlson provided is based on the direction that has been given to district staff in the past. So it's been low and level, you know, you keep the tax rate as low as possible, as low as possible. So we have had a history in Pasco of when our assessed value has gone up and it has decreased the quote-unquote "rate" for people, that kind of cost savings has been passed on to the taxpayers. And we do celebrate that with our taxpayers. And that's something, as a Quanian, I present to the Qantas to say, see how this goes down? Most of the time that's happened and it's happened for decades in Pasco. So what you're talking about here has tons of merit to explore and I'm absolutely not undermining the merit of it. It is a change in practice, so, and a change in direction. And we can make those changes, it's just about timing and when we make those changes. So certainly, as a board, you can direct staff to make those changes now with this bond. The other place that it would also fit is in the community builders' planning process in terms of how do we look at, what do future bonds look like? And then if we want to change the focus to say we want to build capacity in for future bonds, that would also be a place where that conversation would be appropriate. So we can do it now. I just want to be really public about and transparent, we're folk, we've been very focused on making sure we're being a transparent organization and a transparent superintendent. That is a change of practice and people do know that our assessed value does impact the rate and that is a savings that has been passed on to taxpayers because we have really celebrated that in the community.
So do you have an opinion on it, one way or the other?
My opinion would be to maintain our past practice and that we be very public in our bond planning process for future bonds because I absolutely think that it has merit to change that practice. I just am a little bit concerned about the timing of it because we haven't been educating our public to this point about what that means. So I think absolutely willing to explore it, absolutely think it has merit, given what we need to do in the future for our community and would be 100% willing to engage in that with the community builders and educating the public ongoing, moving forward.
If we did a 59 cent bond at $2.84 and we did that sale back this year, any future assessed values, we would pass on to the public, wouldn't we not, beyond this year?
Yes, the rate would decrease if we saw greater than 6 or 3% assessed value.
So right now, now it's simply, are we taking it on last year like they passed it or this year? You know, to me, I still feel like we take it on last year, we do the 284, we build in that extra, we ask the bond people, whatever, the community builders, see what they want. And then we let, as those assessed values go up, you know, in the next years, it's going to go down. To me, that just makes more sense, so.
I think it's deceptive to what we have done in the past. And I think that it would be giving the wrong message to our taxpayers and to the people that have, how we've done it in the past. I don't think we have enough time to give out that information. You know, when we only, we're talking February the 27th, we have to do this. And, you know, so we've talked about being transparent, all of this, giving all the information to our consumer base and giving, being out there in front and giving all the information. And so in this case, we haven't done that.
And I disagree. We just passed a bond for 99 million for a 59 cent increase. That will happen this year and as the assessed values go up, they will, we will continue, that number will continue to go down as it has in the past.
I kind of want to ask, just to simplify, what would you like to see? You would like a longer schedule? And let's just talk about the numbers, the estimates. Are you asking to spread it out over more years?
Are you asking me?
Yeah. What would you like to see?
So here's, this all comes back to a long-range facilities plan. And that's, we don't have that. So right now, it's difficult to even project when and how much. Again, we need buildings. There's two things at play here. If we had a long-range facilities plan where we said, look, we're going to build, we project, we're going to build these buildings at this, run this bond at this time, build these buildings at this time, then we can structure our debt so it stays even through that whole period. We haven't done, we don't have a long-range facilities plan. We don't even know when we would run the next bond. We're behind. So maybe it doesn't make sense to do that now because we don't know what year we would build that in. And so we just go with it. And when we get this long-range facilities plan put together, then we can build in the rate so that when we pass this bond and we know we want to run one, just using, picking some numbers here, we passed one in 17, if we go on our four-year schedule, 17, 21, 25, 29, we just, we project out and try and keep that as level as we can. Now, what's going to happen is we're going to get to, let's say, 21, we run another bond and it's going to be a bump. Everybody's taxes are going to go up. They'll be well aware of it because they, they'll know that.
Build a new high school or whatever, yeah. So that costs money.
Yeah, but what I'm, my point is, you know, you can look at it, if you want to talk about the term and I think everybody understands that the shorter the term, the less interest you pay. However, if you know that you're going to have future expenses and you, you know, if you know you're going to have future expenses, but you put all of your payment against one, I'm not even sure a good way to do this, taking cars, for example. Let's say that we've got a car this year, we buy a car this year, our payment is $200 a month and we know that in three years, we're going to need another car, let's say $500 a month because it just gives us a little more room to work with. And we're making so much money, we're maxed out at $500 a month. Well, we know in three years, we're going to need another car and we're going to have to add on top of that. And now we've already spent our 500 and now we've got to add another $300 for a car. Now we go up to 800 and we just can't afford that. Whereas if we say we're going to buy this first car, make the term a little longer, keep the payment a little lower so that when we go to buy that next car, it's within our budget, then we have a lot better chance of managing that. That's where I'm.
No, and I agree, back to the first couple of points about the long-range plan, we've been heading down that road for over a year and I'm all for that, I absolutely agree with you. We just, but we have to make a decision right now, so we have to just do the best with what we have.
And I'm good with, let's just do.
Yeah, because, you know, the car and the housing is a perfect example, people understand that. And the car payments now, they're allowing, you know, six, seven years and it's a horrible, if that's what it takes for you to do it, you shouldn't do it. So I really don't like the idea of spreading things out. People understand, if we're going to pass another $100 million bond and build a high school, that's going to cost money. We don't, I know what you're saying with the rate, but that's pushing it down the road and ultimately it costs our community as a whole a lot more money. And so to me, that's a bad investment, you know, that's the same, that's the seven-year car loan, that's the 30-year house. car loan, that's the 30-year house loan. It's, you're, you're trying to live a certain way now, and put off the money down the road, where you may not even have to pay it. And so it, it sounds good, because it keeps a rate lower, but in the end, it actually costs our community more. And you're passing more of that on to future residents of the community. And I think that's a bad thing. And I think, I agree with Ms. Lincoln, you know, we should keep it the same. I'm all good for having that discussion. But I think at this time, three weeks before we have to decide this, it's probably not the right time. And I agree with you, that it needs to be part of the long-range facilities planning. If we want to approach things that way, I would not be in favor of that, because it costs our community as a whole, people that want to live in this community, it's going to cost them more money. And it's going to save a little bit upfront, but in the end, if you plan on living here, it's going to cost you more money. And to me, that's not a good thing, especially when historic, in this, since 2008, we've been in such a good economic standing in our society. To me, that's a bad, a bad move to push it off further down the road.
So, just to counter that a little bit, you say it's going to cost more money. And you're right. I mean, the shorter the term, we can make it, the better, in every case. However, what that means is a bigger tax increase later, if we go to, if we go to do that, which makes it a bigger lift to pass, to pass the next bond. Now, if we know how much money we have, how much we can afford, we can, and we know what we need. I'm not talking about, we want that big home, so we're going to go on it for a 30-year mortgage to get as big a home as we can get. We can spread it out over, we can spread that payment out, so that we can afford it. And in this case, I'm not talking about, just because we can go 30 years, we go 30 years. This is something we need. So if we can keep the payment level and structure it now to do that, I think that's in our interest. But I would agree, we are, we don't have time to do that. So, we're going to go with it. We're going to put together a long-term facilities plan, and we're going to build the, the bond payment to match that.
I, I feel like, I realize there's lots of plans that, everything out there, but we are in an ideal spot right now to do something like this. Because of the levy equalization, our community is going to see a huge tax break. So, so paying off this bond at the rate that the taxpayers agreed to, at 59 cents per thousand that first year, will really help. It, it won't be a big hit to the community, because tax rates are going down. And it will help front-load that, so it will be easier for us to pass that next bond. Even if we pass it in 2022, we'll say, okay, in 2023, that rate will lower. Or we can put the next one in according to that, that front-loaded rate, so that, so that it won't be a big hit. To me, this is better for the taxpayers, because, because we, because it won't be as big of a hit when we are desperate for our high school, desperate for another middle school, and desperate for another elementary school. And then instead of paying these taxes, they're paying these taxes, when there is no tax break, to offset it.
And I, so we're talking about two different things now. So one, you said, to have the tax rate be higher initially, and then we were also talking about a longer term. Those are different things. So we could structure it to still be 14 years or 15 years, and have it more.
No, we don't want it a longer term. We just want it higher initially.
I agree with you. I'd support that. But see, that's, that's a different thing than a longer term. And I, and you mentioned too, I just wanted, again, you said the voter approved a rate, they didn't approve a rate. So we really have to get away from that messaging that is, that's not what was done with the passage of the bond. But I actually would be in favor of that, of having a more payment upfront, because I like that. I agree, we're having a huge drop. We don't need it to drop $3. Let's have it drop $2.50. I would be in favor of that, but not a longer term. So I, Mr. Lerman, I don't know what you think. You haven't chimed in. So if we had time to do it that way, I would, I would be in favor of that, that we would have less of a drop. It honors what we estimated, but keeping it within the 14-year, I'm in favor of that, because that saves us money and creates that, that drop in the future, where we've planned in a future bond.
Clearly, we need more education on this. Is, Scott, do you have anything you want to say, or Sherry?
I guess, I'm in favor of lower and longer, like we've done at 250. I see the benefits of what you guys are saying, but some taxpayers do look at this. And when we went out and calculated 59 cents per thousand on a $98 million bond, it was done, assuming that it would go at 59 cents, not on the 2017, but most people say, on whatever my base is, when you go and sell, they don't know when you sell those bonds, but when you start. And so I look at it there, and I, I would think that we need to message a little different. Another thing is, we have some other variables here. Next year, our taxes for MNO are not going to go down, correct? They're going to go up.
This year.
This year, they're going down.
Next year.
So they're, they're going to go up. We also.
They've gone up.
Yeah, they've gone up.
If you got your tax bill, you've seen it's gone up.
I haven't paid my taxes.
No, you, but you got your tax bill.
I know, okay.
I did get my tax bill.
So in 2018, you got a significant increase. 2019, because of our local levy, going from what was the advertised rate of 450, down to $1.50, which the real rate is less than 450. But it's going to be a significant decrease, starting in 2019.
And we will never see a decrease like that again.
Why would we never?
So why not let that do this right now? Because I feel like this is an ideal time to, to do that. And I don't feel like we, we are going to still go down. We are going to let that assessed value take it down. It is simply this first number that we're getting out there. I don't think there's any deception there. And I don't think it's going, the only thing we're changing is that it's going to look high, or that we're going to pay off more of it initially.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
But the thing, and so I don't think anybody will even notice this, and this and that, and this little tiny bit difference between, do we go off this year, or did we go off next year? We just do it, we go off, and then it will go down, just like every other assessed value interest rate has in the past.
Thanks, Mike. The, the rate actually didn't go up nearly as much as was projected, because, as they mentioned, our assessed value went up 12%. So we were actually planning for a much larger increase this year, because the state increased the property tax. But our assessed value went up so much, that that dropped our levy rate. And so it actually didn't change nearly as much as people were thinking. And then next year, it's going to go down dramatically. If we want to change exactly.
I know, this is the perfect timing to do this, because we're losing.
It's the perfect timing if we didn't have to get this bond sold. Because we on this board are all in different places, let alone the community. So, Scott, you had asked, and I think we interrupted you with the tax stuff. Did you have a further commentary?
I was just going to point out that we're, we're talking 250 here, but we do have some other things to consider, like volatility. If it does go up a percent or more within the next month, and we sell at five or five and a half cents, it might not be 250. Trevor's going to get us the number, but it might be 270 or 275, without us even setting it at 284. If we set it 284, and it goes up 1.75%, he'd have to do the math, but maybe we're pushing $3. So there's other things to consider. And so that's why I'd say, where we're at right now, I, I support staying at the, the 250 at this point.
So, so my objective here is simply to keep a level, constant tax for, for schools. And the challenge is, right now, things are moving all over the board. And, and unfortunately, we've got to get this done. So I am, I am in favor of just moving forward with what you proposed, Trevor. I think, for now, that's the best thing. It, it comes with, I'm, I agree with Amy, this is a, I don't know, this is a great time to do some things that, that we as a board can do, that would keep our rate level. But, but if we don't, if we just go with what Trevor has proposed here, we're going to see a significant drop next year. And when we run a bond in the future, we're going to see a significant increase. And I am in favor of leveling that out, but I'm not sure we can do that.
Then the best way to do that is to see this little bit of an increase, so that when we do go to run a bond, instead of having an 80% or an 80 cent increase, we are going to have a drop in this bond, so then it'll only be a 40 cent increase. So it will help it be more level.
So pick a year.
So, this is ideal. We have a huge tax break.
I'm saying, when do we build the drop?
Yeah, exactly. And that's the thing. It's really, you're just playing with numbers. I mean, it's, you're kind of, it's just supporting a message. But if we really explain to people, because again, if you're going to pass an $80 million bond, the taxes go up, you're just kind of, it's just almost deceitful, because you're, you're just keeping it level, because if we didn't pass the bond, it was going to drop. But we've kept it the same. And so really, it doesn't.
See, and I, here's, here's where, here's where I disagree, Aaron. We, we know what our need. I mean, we can project out in the future, so that we could, if we were really good at projecting, we could keep our bond rate level in perpetuity. If we could project what our growth was, both in, in district need, student growth, and we could project what our, our assessed value growth was, if we could project those accurately, there's a target number out there that, that is the rate. And we could stay at that. Every time, I mean, we could, we could tell exactly when we need to build again, and we could structure our bond, so at that time, it stays right at that level. We don't have to ask them for another tax increase. And that's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
And I agree 100% Steve. But starting at that higher level, we are going to have so much more ability to keep it level from here on out, if we have a drop, and we're going to add another bond. We have 10 times the ability to do that. So if that's the goal, let's, let's pass this for 284.
Again, it's a lot of assumptions. So we've already seen that they've, the, the estimates and projections of assessed value and growth have been off every year for 20 years. They're, they're never accurate. We tried to run a bond that failed. So those things are, that's based on a lot of assumptions that are impossible. We can plan for it, and I'm all for planning for it. But what you've described, based on all those assumptions, every single projection is wrong. It's never even close, because people keep saying, we're going to slow down, and this, and it doesn't happen.
Because we, we project conservatively, because we don't want to project the other way.
Right, which is good, I think. But again, it's not, they're not accurate.
Okay.
When does the community builders meet again?
We don't have a date, so we're.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Break?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, Mr. McNeil. Thanks, Howard. And we will be back again for our regular board meeting at 6:30.